Mikes.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our second day of the 2024-2025 Annual Budget Workshops.
Commissioner Hale, would you lead us in the prayer? Commissioner White, would you lead us in the pledge?
If y'all would, please stand.
Please do so. You know, your heads. All we think for this day, I think of the opportunity to come together and do the work of the county. All we think for everyone here in attendance today, the Lord will pray that you'll get everyone home safely and the Lord guide us and help us do what's right. Watch over us, forgive us for our sins, bless us. In Jesus' name we pray all this. Amen.
Amen.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God and in his name we will be with you and his as well for all.
Okay. Before we get off into the nonprofits, which is the first item for today, is there anything Keith, Greg, Mr. Scott, that we need to go back to Mr. Gentry yesterday that we kind of left outstanding? I don't think that there was.
We had, we, Brittany's got more information about kind of the game plan for the sidewalk for Dillon Park. If you want to discuss that now or later. Also, I've got two topics that we can discuss later or now that was brought up from Urban Management when you and I met with Mr. Bowles a while back. So just wanted to throw it out there, conversation. But we did that now or we can do that later. Later is probably maybe better.
Yeah, if it's not pressing, we got a lot of folks from the private sector in these nonprofits here, so we can kind of maybe run through this and get them back to doing what they were going to be normally doing today. So guys, I know last year we kind of ran, ran through this list first and then offered opportunity for anybody that wanted to speak. Some are here, most are here it looks like, but some are not. So y'all want to run through this list like we did last year and kind of talk about it and then give the folks that are here an opportunity to speak if they so choose?
Sure. That'd be good.
Okay. What, you started?
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir, I was just going to ask you guys kind of what y'all were thinking.
Well, I'm gonna just take it one by one. On mine, the ARC, I have them down for the same thing they requested for.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Crosses for our community, I'm at agreement or I'm in favor of what they asked for, the 2,500.
I would like to see us do something for those guys, for the ones that don't, that don't know the crosses for our community. Those are the crosses for the city of Lavo. They're a 501(c)(3), just like everybody else on here. And I really like seeing the, you know, that tribute paid back to the veterans.
Is there, is there anybody here from, from Brantford Christian Services? They do the one in Brantford. I know they didn't make the list, Chairman, but, and I know we can't do much about it because it's not on the list, but I'd like to reserve that for them for next year if possible, if they request it.
If you would, yeah, if there's a need down there, if you would maybe get, ask them to get ahold of Mandy sometime between now and next year to, you know, facilitate an official ask, I guess, if you would, and be vetted with their 501(c)(3) as, as they do.
Yeah.
So pass that information to them if you would.
I will. Thank you.
Okay.
And if anybody else wants to jump in here, I'm just.
Well, I got the, I'll, we can all share the load here. I got, I got disabled American veterans. I got them at 3,500. Their request was 4,000. Last year they got 25. I got them at 3,500.
I'm good with that.
On the Hearthstone, I'd like to keep them where they're at as well.
Okay.
And Wilbur.
Here on the PAL.
Yes, sir.
Would like to give them that. I do have Mr. Cherry back there and Mr. Ford there here. They are, they have gotten money from the previous sheriff, Sheriff Tony Camus gave about 10 grand to them, but they haven't been able to get a lot of funds. And Mr. Cherry, the executive director over there, he, he don't even take any money because there's not enough funds to even pay him anything. So he's been just giving him his, his time and efforts. And we got a lot more kids that's coming out there that they're helping those kids and having activities for them. So I would like to, if we could, give them that what they asked for, their, their request.
Okay. So they request, last year they got 6,000. They requested, requested 10.
Yes.
This year.
You want to speak, Cherry?
Good morning. How you doing?
Yeah, we're jumping around, aren't we?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll go back to the Historical Commission after this one. Mr. Commissioner Perkins, he jumped on down the list.
Well, I took it that you all were just going down the list.
He thought we was gonna run out of money.
Maybe I should have just kept going.
Mr. Cherry, if you'd like to speak, come on up. Our, our clerk's office is getting on to us for jumping around.
Good morning. I sort of stepping in this morning for the chairperson, Terry Benson, and I, I am the, he's having some issues, little health issues, and so I'm stepping in. And we are asking for an increase because of that after school program and the snacks and, and things have gone up a little bit. And we've been at that 6,000 for quite some years and just asking for a $4,000 increase, which would really be beneficial.
Okay. Well, I had them at an increase. I didn't have them at 10,000, Commissioner Perkins, but, you know, that's up to the board totally.
Well, I'm, I'm the same way. I didn't have them at the full amount, but I did have them for an increase. I had seven, I'm just telling you, I had, I had $7,000 down is what I had.
I had 7,500.
So how about Commissioner Perkins, what if, what if we did, because I think everybody's, almost everybody's getting cut some here. What if we did 8,000?
Okay.
8,000.
I was gonna ask eight. I mean, what, since everybody will have there and say, I was gonna say, what if you could have made it to eight?
So that's a $2,000 increase.
Yeah.
You good with that?
I'm good with that.
I think that's fair.
8,000? Yep. Okay. Let's go back to Historical Commission. I, I did, I honestly, I talked Eric about this and I had them at the 16,000 that they got last year and they're asking for 20. I had them at 16. And I think Eric, where is Eric?
Where is he?
I think Eric said that that would be okay. And I think that we've talked about us, the county taking over that, the building because of your insurance premiums. That's the reason for the asks is because your insurance just keeps skyrocketing because you're a single entity.
Yes.
Paying for your own property insurance. But I think we've talked to Mr. Scott and Mr. Fury about the county taking over that building, which group that with all of our, the county's assets and that we could probably get the insurance for like a half.
It'll save money. It'll save the county and the taxpayers money, yes.
Yeah. So I think that, I think that if we will take over your building, you can get by with the 16,000.
Yes.
And I think we've already kind of talked about taking that building over and putting it under Parks and Rec.
I'm good with that.
To save, to save money.
That'd be great. We appreciate that.
You good with that? I'm good with that.
I am.
Okay.
I'm good with that. If that's, okay, Eric, if that's what we make.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, he's, he's okay with it.
I'm good with that. We've talked about it for, our board has talked about it. We're good.
So, so board, I think we can't vote on that in a workshop, but I think just be knowing that that's going to come back as an action item for the county to take over that museum, Train Depot building, and put it under our property insurance.
That'd be great.
As an asset of the county.
Appreciate that. Thank y'all very much.
Okay. So I had them at 16. Hooked on Heroes, they're, they, last year they got 3,000. This year they're requesting 5,100. I had them at 4,500.
That's exactly what I wrote.
That's what I got.
Who's next? We just did PAL.
How much, how much was that?
4,500, Hooked on Heroes.
Chamber of Commerce is next. What we got next? And I.
You're gonna lower it into like 10 or something?
Daniel?
No, I appreciate everything they do, guys. I don't know what y'all want to do.
Well, I, I'm trying not to do, I'm trying to be fair across the board. When I, when I ran through this list and I shared the cutting, but inflation is real. So, you know, I, I think that a lot of folks are probably entitled to an increase because the cost of doing business is, is obviously not going down. So, but I don't want to hog the mic here, so.
I had 24,000 is what I, what I put down.
Okay. I'm good with 24. That's an increase, but not, not the full ask.
24 for Chamber?
If the rest of them agree on it.
I'm good. I had 24 and a half, but that's close enough. Absolutely.
20 Valley 4Cs?
I didn't, I asked for 10 and, and I got five last year and I put them down at fi, oh, 5,000. I put them down at the same thing.
Okay.
As last year.
I'm good with that.
Three for five. Three for five. Three for five.
What? Three for five?
Three votes.
Yeah, I'm with that.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Swanee Valley Genealogical Society, I had them at the, at the 2,500. They had 2,000 last year. They're asking for 25. I know they experienced some damage and whatnot in, in their building. You, you want them to speak?
Yes.
Okay. I had you at the 2,500, so.
Yeah, thank y'all. But I want to continue to, well, since COVID, that hit us hard. You know, most of our people are older. And like the museum, our insurance has gone out of sight. We have had to give up our insurance on the building. We have liability and flood. We have.
You got flooded too, didn't you?
We got 12 inches of water in our building. We're still not up. And as long as that road's, and our building gets repaired, we're not out. So, if y'all could help.
So does the flood insurance gonna pay anything?
Yes, our flood insurance is gonna pay. And, but.
Do, what did your premiums go up to? Do you have a number?
I, I didn't even write that down. That's, I'm not a treasurer.
No, ma'am, I get it. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just curious.
I, I, I couldn't tell you, but it's, it was outside something that we couldn't afford.
So 25, 25.
Anything y'all for you to help us?
25.
Yes, ma'am. I had you 25 with a 5, that's a $500 increase because of the flooding.
So I'm good with that.
That's what you asked for.
Well, I know, but we hadn't flooded at that point either. And they hadn't closed the road down.
Got you.
I got you.
What are y'all thinking?
Three grand?
What, yeah. What's the pleasure to board?
Three grand?
I'm good at three.
Yep.
Three grand, okay. Three grand.
Three thousand. You got, I think five.
Five.
Yep, yep.
I'm good.
United Way, last year was zero. Request this year was 2,500. I had them at zero.
Me too.
Mobley, Perkins?
You had them at zero.
I don't think the board's given to them in years and years. Viv, next, next is Vivid Visions.
So we're agreeing, nothing for?
Correct.
United Way.
Yeah, Vivid Visions, somebody ever see somebody to speak?
Yeah, welcome. Sure?
I'm sorry. This is my first year as executive director, so.
Welcome.
I'm not as professional as they may have been, but previously.
No, you're good.
I do know that we did ask for a significant increase this year in funding. Our VOCA funds were cut drastically. Actually, our VOCA funding was cut by $187,000 last year. We've had to let two staff members go already. We are in jeopardy of losing more staff because of those funding cuts. I tell you, United Way has been amazing for us. They help us out tremendously. We were able to secure $45,000 from them and then we get $325,000 from the state. But again, the VOCA funding is what pays all of our staff. So without those funds, we may go under. We're trying to come up with the money. We have up to our fundraising to, we have actually had more fundraising this year than ever. So we have done well with that. The community's been amazing as far as that goes. Oh, by the way, I'm Carol Johnson and this is our program director, Sarah.
So just really quick, last year, we served 327 adults, 189 children, 9,919 shelter nights, 12,671 services total were provided to victims. 262 unmet requests for shelter that we had to turn them away, and then 807 crisis calls.
However, we were able to secure an $80,000 housing initiative that gives us the freedom to pay maybe back mortgage for someone who is in a domestic violence situation or even to help with rent, utilities, things like that, so that we can try to move them out of the shelter quicker. And so that a lot of that is not falling on United Way and other agencies that help our ladies get into housing and things like that.
I have a question. The 187 VOCA funding, is that federal or state or where, who was that?
That's federal.
Federal.
And I'm not going to talk politics, but apparently they just don't have the money anymore. It's going somewhere else. So, and this year we are expected, and they have already told us to expect another 30% cut in that. So that'll put us roughly at about $120,000 from them this year.
I just, I just wasn't sure if that was, those were state or federal funds.
Those are federal funds.
And I will say that Vivid Visions is the only domestic violence crisis center in Swanee County. So if we're, we're going to shut our doors, there, there's going to be an influx, you know, with the Sheriff's Department, DCF, things like that of unmet needs.
I won't say the location, but you, y'all, y'all do have a safe house in Swanee County.
We have a 17-bed facility. As a matter of fact, right now, we're over capacity. We have them sleeping in the playroom couch. We have them on air mattresses on the floor sometimes. We do whatever we need to do to make sure someone stays safe and that we have a place for them.
Okay. Y'all got, board members have any questions?
Yeah, I just was looking here. I mean, any specific numbers like for Swanee County, what you guys have done?
Just what we've provided for Swanee County?
As far as, you know, maybe the homeless or folks like we're talking about, something like that?
Yes, sir. Most of our clients are from Swanee County. We are part of United Way's homeless coalition. And again, they have been tremendous with funneling funds to Vivid Visions. When they knew our VOCA funding was being cut, they were right on top of it. What can we do? What can we do to help? So they have been great with that. But the 327, I would probably say roughly about two, probably about 285 or 290 of them were actually Swanee County citizens. We will take from Lafayette or Hamilton County or even Columbia County if need be.
Are we trying to only serve Swanee if we can? Because other counties obviously have their own facilities.
Any other board members got any questions?
So have you asked the other counties for some help as well?
We, we're all experiencing it. Every center across the state, there have been two centers actually already closed due to funding cuts from VOCA and things like that. In the state of Florida, we used to be 42 certified centers. Now there's only 40. So everybody's just feeling the pinch, like you, I mean, everyone in this room is feeling the pinch.
Inflation's real.
Mm-hmm.
And like keeping fueling generators for the two major stores for weeks at a time, like all, you know, the fuel costs went up, the food, everything.
And also, one of our staff cuts that we had to provide was our transportation. We had a full-time transportation person to make sure that the ladies could get to work, because we take them to work. We bring them home. We take them to daycare. We provide everything.
Have you reached out to Swanee Valley Transit to see if they could help with some of those?
We have not. We, I know sometimes we'll call them. We have done cab fares if we have to, things like that, just to try to help with someone, some of that. We do have several staff members. As long as we have two staff members on duty, we do have one that can provide transportation. However, we just don't have that full-time transportation person to get them to places they need to be.
A lot of times we don't have two staff members. So that's the problem because we can't leave the shelter unattended. So it's typically just one person there.
Any other board members have any questions?
No.
What y'all thinking? Crickets. Nobody's thinking.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna just be honest. I had them down at the same thing we give them last year. And, and I'm not trying to be mean about it. I know you probably need it. But, I mean, at some point, the county just has to rein it in some.
Why don't we ask the?
Anyone else?
I heard my opinion, so I'm waiting on everybody else.
I'd like to hear maybe from the audience, from our community, what their thoughts.
It's their tax money.
It's their money. Yep. Anybody?
Ken Weaver is asking to speak.
Ms. Weaver?
Ken Weaver, Swanee County citizen, law enforcement, 40 years. What they do, we can't do without. What y'all can help and do is needed. These domestic violence victims, some of the most horrible stuff you've ever seen or heard. If we can help them, let's help.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
I'd like to say something too. I used to do crisis intervention at Sheriff's Office in Marion County. And part of what we did was this, we just responded to calls with law enforcement. And what we're doing here is, particularly with the children, is prevention. This is all paid forward. And if we don't start here, these children turn it over and over and over, we're just going to continue to see this kind of things. And I'd love to volunteer for you, but I think we should help them.
Okay.
Well, we meet them in the middle at 37.
What now? 37, 47. And I'm good with that.
I'm, yeah, I mean, I'm, everybody's getting cut. So, I mean, I say everybody's getting cut, but how about we meet you in the middle at 37,000?
Perfect.
Okay. I got you at 37. Perkins?
Yeah, 37 is fine.
Okay, I think you got five.
See an increase.
You got five at 37. I got Wilbur Community Center getting, I got them at, at 4,000 at their ask.
I do too, Chairman.
Commissioner Mobley?
I'm good with it.
How about the four?
4,000 on their ask.
Yeah, Mr. Mancio up here.
Hey, Mr. Mancio, how are you, sir?
Good morning, Commissioner. How y'all doing this?
Welcome.
Wonderful.
Doing good. I just want to say we appreciate everything that y'all do for us. And we appreciate the funds that you gave us last year. Came in good hand. And everything is going good. Our programs is working out good. So really appreciate everything. Although this year we did have a little damage to the building. So the funds will come in handy getting that correct from the storm. Okay? So really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mancio.
Can we go back to ARC?
Can't.
ARC? Yes, ma'am.
30.
That's what we agreed on.
Yes, ma'am.
And crosses, 2,500?
Yes.
Disabled, 4,000?
35, I thought.
Yeah.
35.
And we gotta do the Hearthstone.
25.
25.
25. I didn't have any of those. Did y'all have all of them?
Can we, can I just run down the list and y'all check them all? And then add them up for us, please?
Yes, hold on a minute.
Yeah, if anybody disagrees, just let us know. But as long as we got.
And then what we'll do, guys, audience, when we run down this list, if there's anybody that hasn't spoke that wants to speak, y'all please come up to the podium. What, hold on, let me run down the list. I think everyone, I'm waiting on her to say she's ready.
I'm ready.
I got, so this is, and board members, if I'm wrong on my notes, y'all correct me. I have ARC at 30,000. I got Crosses for Our Community at 2,500. I got Disabled American Veterans at 3,500.
Right.
I got Hearthstone Botanical Gardens at 2,500. I got Historical Commission at 16,000. I got Hooked on Heroes at 4,500. I got PAL at 8,000. I got Swanee County Chamber at 24,000. I got Swanee Valley 4Cs at 5,000. I got Swanee Valley Genealogical Society at 3,000. I got United Way at zero. I got Vivid Visions at 37,000. I got Wilbur Community Association at 4,000. Sinead, what's that total?
140,000.
On the dot?
Yes, sir.
Well, y'all did good. How'd y'all do that?
Lucky.
Okay. Guys, I'm good with that.
I'm good.
Mr. Williams, would you like to speak on behalf of?
Buddy Williams, I'll be speaking on behalf of Crosses for Our Community and for Bill, Linda, Kathleen, and AJ, which we are the founding members. If you didn't realize it, these are the crosses that we're putting out twice a year, Memorial Day and Veterans Day. When we started in '21, it was on a whim and, and $0 to start with. Right now, this year in November, we'll deploy over 800. Here's the deal. They're very expensive. We started at 50. We're now at $100. But that's a $100 fee for the lifetime of this cross. Most have to keep charging to, to have maintenance, et cetera. What we will use the money for is, is to, we have to store them. So we have to buy trailers. We have to, to do maintenance with these crosses, buy flags, et cetera. I just want to tell you how deeply grateful we are to you guys, because if you've not ridden through it, it'll take your breath away when you do go through it. And we're going to continue to expand. And this will just help us keep our feet on the ground. The biggest part is, is we buy everything locally except for the crosses. So our local vendors will be the beneficiary of the funds that we receive from each and every one of you. And I know each and every one of you probably have a cross representing somebody in that mile or two miles of crosses that we display now. And we appreciate, we appreciate the opportunity to serve this community, not just Lavo, Commissioner Lamb, because these are going to expand into the county as well. Actually, this coming time, I think we're going a different route with them. But we want to make this thing grow. We want to represent our community. And most importantly, we want the veterans to know that they are the reason we can do the things that we do and we are more than grateful for that. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's going to help us a lot.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
For the audience sake, let them know how they can.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you wanted to purchase a cross, like I said, they're $100. We just need a few things from you. We need to know the branch of service. If they've served three, we can only add one, okay? And we don't add all the, the rank structure to it. But you can go to our Facebook page, Crosses for Our Community. You can see Ms. Stephanie at the portable building place beside Tractor Supply. Or if you know any individual in here personally, we'll be glad to help you out. We'll take cash, credit card. We'll take whatever you got. We're not picky. But we just want this to grow, because like I said, without the veterans, you're not here today doing what we're doing right now. And we appreciate that. And, and literally, we've got a good group. It's a small group. There's been a lot of blood, sweat, tears, arguments, and just being mad at each other and quitting four or five times and then back at it. At the end of the day, it's not about any of us. It's about what that represents for this great nation that we, that we live in. So thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't have said it any better. Thank you, Mr. Williams. And thank you for your volunteers. I see the Riggins and Ms. Townsend out there. Thank y'all.
Yep.
For what y'all do. Anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of your organization? Welcome, sir. Yes, sir.
I just want to say thank you for.
All right.
I just want to say thank you for donating to us. We appreciate it. I'm BJ Blackman. I'm Vice President of Hooked on Heroes, if y'all don't know, if y'all don't know me. I'm definitely not a public speaker by no means. We got Gene here as well, which I told him, y'all would probably rather hear from a veteran than from somebody who just works along the side of everybody. But I do, I want to appreciate the community. Thank them for coming on the side of us. This is our 10 years. We've been doing this for 10 years. 2,500 veterans have been out fishing. Many of them have come to us in tears, just appreciative of getting them out of the house. If you don't know that realm, they usually, the older ones usually don't get out of the house. They're in a bad way. They just mentally. So this is able to get them out, communicate with other veterans, and we get to take them out on day fishing at no cost to them. They show up, we take them fishing. So I want to thank y'all for being part of that.
100%. We appreciate it. Thank y'all for what y'all do too.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say that I participated pretty much in every one they've ever done, but I was the last one. I had a grandfather, a father and a son, all three of them that had deserved and one was still in this room. So.
That was pretty cool. Good times. Good deal. Yes, ma'am, welcome.
I'm Judy Monday, Hearthstone Gardens, and I just wanted to give you a visual of some of the help that you gave to us last year. We have Mirror Lake and we have a 17-station story wall. Uh, we have Mirror Lake, and we have a seventeen-station story walk around Mirror Lake. This is one of the stories. They are on two sides, because, so we have now four stories. And since it's around a lake, we thought as theme of frogs and amphibians was appropriate. So that's what we have here. Here are frogs, all the different frog eyes that you can see, uh, how they have webbed feet. Let's turn over on this side. These are, this is a frog here who can jump, uh, sixteen feet, okay? So it's colorful, it's entertaining, but it's also educational. And I just wanted to punctuate that, and thank you for the help that you've given us. And come on out, it's fun.
Thank you, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Morning.
Information about our program that we want to share.
I'm Michelle Ward, Executive Director, Swanee Valley Foresees. Just want to thank you for your continued support of our program. Uh, we're entering our fortieth year of services to our four county area. We serve Columbia, Hamilton, Lafayette, and Swanee Counties. Head Start and Early Head Start, uh, is a national program. We're the sole grantee for our area. We serve three hundred and seventy-four children and their families. We provide high-quality, early childhood, uh, and development services, uh, to those children and families, birth of five-year-olds, um, in our four county area. Health services, uh, educational, uh, high-quality family development services. And, uh, so we just want to say thank you for your continued support and ensure that everyone knows about our program. We serve, uh, mainly low-income, uh, families, uh, children in foster care, homeless children, children with disabilities, uh, all qualify for our program, and it is, is free, free to those families that qualify. So thank you so much for your continued support.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak today? Welcome, ma'am.
Good morning, my name is Cheryl. Cheryl Paretta, and I'm with the Disabled American Veterans Auxiliary. We just want to say thank you for all your support over the past year and continued support this year. Uh, this past year, we were fortunate enough, there a per, citizen donated an RV for a veteran. And our EDA Disabled American Veterans, uh, paid for the wheelchair ramp and the deck to surround it. And that's part of what your funds go to. We've been serving veterans meals here and there, um, just whatever they need. So if you hear of any veterans that are in need of something, please contact us. We're, we're here to help the local veterans. Thank you for your support.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate what y'all do. Ms. Smith, how are you, Hampson? Well, I know you're from school, so my bad.
Good morning, I'm the Executive Director at the Swanee County Chamber of Commerce. I want to say thank you all for your continued support. Um, we have been doing so much with the chamber, we continue to stay busy and involved in our community. We are preparing for our Business of the Year banquet that's scheduled for October seventeenth. We have business workshops that's scheduled throughout the year as well. And it's, we have one today, actually, at three PM, um, with Hunter Abercrombie and Edward Jones Investments. So, and it's free to the community. If you have a chance, please stop by, it's at three PM today. We're also prepping for our fortieth annual Christmas on the Square event that's scheduled for December. It's also, you know, a great event, and we hope that you all do come out. And we just want to say thank you again for your continued support.
Thank you, Ms. Hampson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Good morning.
I'm Jennifer Ankers with United Way of Swanee Valley. And first, I want to thank you for your service, because y'all do such a great job here. Um, I wanted to point out a couple of things about what United Way does. We do, um, we actually do do a fundraising campaign where businesses, governments, um, allow their employees to do payroll deduction. Um, and what we raise in Swanee County, we actually donate more than that to local agencies here, which include Vivid Visions, Police Athletic League, and, um, Voices for Children and Love Inc. So we invest about two hundred thousand into those four agencies each year. And so we would, we do need more support in order to help them more, as you saw from two of those agencies, the work that they do. We also do support the ARC, I forgot them. And not to, um, uh, point out something. Our records show that in March of twenty twenty-three, we did receive twenty-five hundred. And in October of twenty twenty-two, we also received twenty-five hundred. Um, so I'm not sure, um, why it showed zero today. But, um, respectfully, we accept all of your decisions and because we love your support of the community and of these nonprofits, because they do such great work here. And that's never more evident than during, um, a hurricane or a natural disaster. And I also wanted to mention that we also do a separate fundraising campaign for, um, natural disasters. So when Idalia came, we did do a fundraising campaign, and we have assisted about eleven households here in Swanee County with that campaign. And we're looking at what, um, we can help with the Hurricane Debbie, um, folks as well. So you can, if you know of anyone, you can refer them to us.
Great, thank you, yes, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak today? All right, move along. All right, Mr. Scott, you got some things we need to discuss.
Thank you, thank you all.
So, two things that I wanted to bring up, uh, somewhat related to emergency management, uh, was brought to us by emergency management. One was a GIS position. The, I'm not sure if we are ready. I know we need a position like that, I don't know if sure. I'd like to do more research and see how we utilize that position. They have Public Works, we use it, uh, a lot. I know that, um, you know, a lot of different, different departments would use that also. During, you know, gray sky days, certainly emergency management could use that position. I'm really not prepared to make a recommendation on what the amount would be. Um, I know that emergency management would like to have it under them, um, as an option. I know that I've spoke to a couple of y'all, and, and kind of the, the gut feeling I got from, from you guys was, if we're funding it, it should be our position. So, um, but sure, surely Public Works, you use it a, a lot. But just want to throw it out there, get your thoughts. I've got a range of what somebody would, would, um, it would take to get somebody in. But, um, just, um, throw it out there, and, and any questions you've got, we can do more research.
I'll, I'll speak first, because I, during Idalia and now Debbie, I spent some time over there at the EOC. And those, the folks that come in here from other areas that are, you know, the Esri, Arc GIS guys, and Paul over at Water Management, um, the amount of data there and efficiency that that technology brings to the table, is immeasurable, I guess you could say. And it's, it's very powerful, um, you know, to be able to track work orders and the locations of those work orders on the Public Works side, and then on the EOC side, you know, where the down, down trees are and power lines and water across the road, and all that stuff can create layers in that mapping program. But I think you gotta be borderline genius to know how to run it, it's so powerful. Um, but at any rate, I think at some point in the future, the county's going to need to look at, at doing that to become, you know, twenty-first century, if you will, and having that data, because that data can be shared, you know, to all other agencies with the licensing across multiple platforms, um, which would make us better. First responders, um, you know, safe routes, all that good stuff. But I would agree that if the board is going to fund that position, because we're going to have more, hopefully, more blue sky days than gray sky ga, days, I'd like to see that position underneath the board and, and wear a Public Works hat under blue skies, and then gray skies, that person transitions right over to the EOC and becomes, you know, an asset there under gray skies. That, that would just be my thoughts. Um, you know, wear both hats.
Right.
All the time. But I think under blue skies, you know, with Public Works facilitating where the work orders are at, you know, routing road graders, whatever may be, saying, hey, here's the problems. Now let's, you know, that, that software can create routes and make it better efficient, less pinballing, if you will. So under blue skies, that's what I'd like to see. But I don't know when you think, I'm, you know, it's like you said the other day, like, hey, that's your job. You tell me when you need that, like...
Well, I think we need to do more research to how we would u, use it for Public Works and, and other, other county agencies. Certainly during gray sky days, I mean, we need it now. But, um, I'd like to bring this back around, look at the contingency money or something later. We make it, find a way to fund it in-house. But, um, again, we need to do more research before we jump out there and, and do it, I think.
Yeah, I think you probably need to, and I see a department head already making his way to the podium. But I think you need to have like a department head meeting. I'm sure Parks and Rec could probably use some of that stuff, code enforcement and zoning. I mean, I think that, you know, maybe in one of your department head meetings, saying, hey, and bring in the EOC and those guys and say, hey, let's have a, a department head meeting and discuss is, what is your need? What is your need? What is your need of, of a position like that?
I think we got a funding volunteer.
Oh, he came up with it, he came up with the money, okay.
Gladly. I would use them to, almost every day, all day, was the first position I asked for when I came here. I was like, who's your GIS person I need them? I can tell you how fast it takes, how long it take a fire truck to get to every single house, how far a house is from every hydrant, everything. It, it helps so much with, with citizens will call in for insurance information, for their, their insurance last. It's, it's amazing the things we can do with GIS, so whatever I need to do to help. I'm a hundred percent supportive of it.
Ms. Chairman?
We definitely need it.
Mr. White?
I've talked to all of them, too, as well, and, and it, I, I agree, it's, it's a definite need in the county. And I think we'd be way better off with it than without it.
Right.
So I'm, I'm in full support.
Okay. Well, we'll circle back around, do a little legwork with the department heads, and circle back around and bring it back to this agenda item. If that's, if that's wishes, or if y'all want to go ahead and prove it, um, certainly, we could, we could, I mean, there should be some minor equipment and stuff, some licensing and stuff that we'd have to do for that area, but, um...
What about the GIS program itself? Do we have that, or is that something we gotta do?
Shannon had been working on that and, and has got a, a model of that. Um, I talk to you different language than me.
Yeah, you have to purchase the license and all that stuff. But I think we have, we have one form of the license, I don't know that it's the open form, I don't know that. But, yeah, that, that, there would probably be some type of expense there. We have a relationship with Esri, I don't know to the extent of what.
Right. And we got, I know that nine-one-one addressing has got a version. We can't really overlay those two, but, um, I know that Shannon's got another, another version he's working with.
So we can't vote on that here, but I think, I, I think we got consensus in the mo, I mean, I, 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 pretty much all of our neighbors already have positions like that, um, that are doing GIS.
Total cost, like what you, you guys are suggesting, what the license is, what the equipment is.
Right, and I just think, I think that you just need to have, you know, you need to have an avenue for the funding of that and have that in mind, and then do some more research, maybe with your department heads, maybe the expenses, the, the software, the, you know, the hardware, the, the salary, and then come back to the board and say, hey, here's our plan. This is what this thing, we think is going to cost us. Um, and here's where the money is in the budget that we're going to use. And maybe some other departments are going to help co-fund it, you know? Everybody's maybe pitching some money in. Maybe nine-one-one can use some of her restricted funds to fund part of it, and, you know, Parks and Rec and Fire, everybody pitches in and helps crack that nut.
And we'll, we'll bring it back to you again.
Well, I think you got consensus that there's a need there to get us into twenty-first century. Everybody, every other county's got GIS guys. I don't say everyone, but...
A lot do, right.
Ones of our size have it.
There's something, just for the public, too, you know, we sent the EOC to have a guy coming from out of town that went down the roads and there was a road underwater, took a picture, showed on the map where it was, and it could zero in, and so we knew right where the issue was.
Yeah, and for the public...
Just as simple as that.
Yeah, so during Idalia, the Miami Dade folks came in and downloaded Quick Capture, which is an app on all of our phones. So while we were out in our districts, all we had to do was take a picture of, of the incident, and it sent, and submitted it, and it sent a pin, the picture, all back to GIS, to EOC. Created this big map that showed all these little pins, and the pic, you had to click on the pin, and it showed the picture. Oh, there's a tree down there, oh, there's a power line there. All I had to do was take a picture, hey, you got a problem right here, take a picture and send it in. And then the EOC could dispatch the proper folks to that need immediately, without street addresses, without anything. You know, I guess it captured the GPS location.
Right.
When I sent it, anyway, pretty, pretty powerful.
That was the handiest thing I've, I've seen, I loved it.
Well, think, think about this for Public Works. When you guys hear of something and see something, y'all can take a picture, and we'd already have it instead of having a few phone calls.
Just take a picture and send it in to Public Works, and you don't have to...
That, that creates the work order.
Create an address or a partial ID number, and what is it? Now tell me about it, just, here's a picture. Go fix it.
We'll, we'll bring it back, thank y'all.
Okay.
Yes.
The, the other thing we had talked about, again, with Chris, we talked about it a couple of years ago. He came and spoke to y'all about that. There's an app that, uh, you, is a communication tool where you can put information out on that app, and it, and it's not just gray skies, it's blue skies also. Uh, as we was going through this whole debris removal last year, or a couple of times last year, or whenever it was, um, you just to be able to communicate with the public better about what is out there, what we need to do. Uh, you could use it for, it's time to sign up for basketball, for Parks and Rec, it's the rodeo time. You could use it for a lot of different applications. Um, the, from what I understand, is, is about a fifteen thousand dollar initial setup, and about eight thousand dollars a year after that. I know that Chris, um, recommended it a couple of years ago, talked about it again last year, maybe, uh, my years blend together. But, um, I got a, we had, we was picking up debris, um, last year, we had a gentleman that came to see me that, um, was not happy that we came to his house and asked for, is this your debris? Or, or whatever is in front of your house. And we had a situation that could have been very volatile if we, um, had cooler heads hadn't prevailed. Anyway, long story short is, he made a comment that, that really hit home to me, and that was, during the storm, I was getting information. After, and from, after the storm, I got nothing, because of cell, cellphone service, internet was down, other things. Um, and sort of thinking, any tool we can have to communicate with our citizens about what's going on. I know we put things on the website. Do people go to websites to look at things? If it's on their phone, that's the thing they do every day. So I want to float it out there as an ask, uh, get y'all's thoughts, questions. We can bring more information back into it later if you want to, but, um, I think it'd be a good tool for all the county to utilize. But more importantly, get information out to the citizens about upcoming things, so...
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. White? I, I agree. I mean, I, I see that as a big issue, is, is communication during a storm or whatever. I mean, even I sometimes have trouble navigating where to find something, what I need, you know, for somebody that's asking me something, so... The more communication you can have, the better it is. I know we talked about it several times already, and, uh, my opinion is we need to do something about it.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scott, who, who would upload this information? Is that something within our department? Who, who?
I would, I would think so. I mean, it certainly is a tool for emergency management, and I think we could look at that. If it, if it functions that way, and it should have multiple users. But during gray sky days, where you shift some of that to, to emergency management, uh, normal days, we could do it in-house, so...
Mr. White, welcome, sir.
I remember what he was speaking about, just to give you a little more information. We come to you, I think you were the chairman at the time, Commissioner White. But it was a department, it was a company that was going to do it, and they could actually build apps for each department. At the time, we were looking for one for emergency management and fire rescue was, um, in meetings with them to build one for us. There could be one for Public Works. And they actually produced a QR code, and that was the thing, we was going to plaster them everywhere. That if you're at a convenience store or something, you hit the QR code, it takes you to the app, and it takes you to the information, was how it built. There's several counties in Florida that already use it. And we've seen a bunch of different samples of apps that they had built for them. It seems to be an effective piece in today's world, because of everybody using cell phones. But that was the big push, is to get the QR codes out everywhere, so it was fully accessible to everybody.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. White?
No, no, Mr. White, just, if you give us more information on that, bring it back to us. I mean, it's, I'm like Commissioner White, it's, it's definitely something we could use as a tool. Because we here as commissioners, I know you, you folks that work for the county here, it's just, how do we get that information out to folks?
Right.
Yeah, in a timely manner, that's the thing.
We'll, we'll bring a demo back the next, in a meeting or so.
Okay.
So you can look at it, um, you know, so, in the big picture of things, you know, fifteen thousand dollars initially set up, eight thousand dollars a year to communicate with our citizens, um, I think it's not a, not a bad ask. a bad ask. It sounds pricey, but communications is key.
And I like what you said, that we could use it further than just the EOC.
Right.
There's a lot of other information, I think, that the community would like to see and hear from us, and if you guys have access to that, it'd be awesome.
The only thing I'd ask is that we do a, a deep dive on it, make sure we're getting what we need, because you know how, how all the software and stuff is, so I would just like, take our time and get, get what we need and make sure it works.
Right, absolutely.
100%.
Thank you all.
Sir.
Anyone have any questions about that? Will bring us back some more information on that, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
I think you got curiosity of the board, I think that there's agreement.
Yes.
We need to do something there to generate another avenue for information.
Yeah.
So we need to go back to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can we get an update from staff? We're right on our dollars after.
I think we're at $1,375,688 on our contingency.
No, not now. That was before the outside.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I want to get some.
Minus 140.
Yep.
$1,235,688.
I forgot to take the 240 out.
Well, did we do something on the sidewalk?
Yes, sir. Brendan's got a little bit of information, we're kind of asked for, for that.
So after talking to our road guys.
I get text messages from the clerk, make them talking to the mic, so.
So I talked to our roadway crew, and basically, our equipment is designed for eight feet or more. So overall, we could actually do it, be pretty labor intensive, just because we don't have, we're not geared up for that. Probably be able to do it for less than what I gave you, but what I would like to do is for you guys to entertain the idea of us going out to bid and just see what we would get as far as having somebody else do it, and then go from there. Maybe ask for it out of contingency later or something, but have a better number.
Maybe, I'm good with that. Maybe, you know, use some of that 184th, because we're still trying to add to that. But I'm good with that.
I'm.
At least see what the number looks like by a private contractor. But one thing that I would say that we, and I, I've mentioned this to you before, is obviously, I'm pushing to finish 250, because the first half of it, everybody knows that's a five-year, Scrap and Scop's a five-year program.
Correct.
All of y'all know that, public, some of them know, some don't, but that's a five-year program. So obviously, I'm pushing to finish 250 and get the second half of 250 paved from where they left off at Clayland Church Road to the bridge, because Fayette County's getting their site done. So we need to make sure we collaborate with FDOT in the event that they decide to fund the other half of 250 through the Scrap and Scop program, that what we do do out there will be.
Will fit.
Will fit and won't adversely affect their planning and design, and then we have to redo something that we just did.
Yeah.
Not coordinate that with them.
Make sure that whoever we get to kind of lay that out, that we communicate those site plans to FDOT to make sure that that's out of their way for any future planning and design.
We can do that.
I think they'll eventually fund it. They're not going to pave half the road and leave the other half unpaved with a $50 million bridge sitting down there. So I think at that, at some point, they will finish that. So I want to make sure we don't have to do it twice.
Absolutely. So I'll come back with you at a later time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brendan.
So we're not setting anything aside for sidewalk?
No, I, I got, I got his 184th road I want to dip into when those numbers come back. He just don't know it yet.
I'm good with that. I mean, he put the money in there anyway. It was a roadie, and it didn't happen, and I, you know, I appreciate that, and I'm, a million dollars ain't going to get it done anyway, so 1.1 ain't going to get it done. So if he needs the money, that's.
We can get the sidewalk done for under 100.
Which it ain't my district anymore. It's actually Commissioner Mobley's district, and I'm just still fighting tooth and nail for it. He is too, as well, but I just.
So do you want to go ahead and take 100 out of that line?
No, let's just leave it alone until she comes back, and then if we, if she comes back with some numbers and a good site plan, we'll address where to get the money from at that point.
Yep.
Y'all good with that?
I agree with that.
Mr. Scott, what else we got?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Berg.
I don't know if I'm out of, going to limb here, if I'm.
Or Charles Mobley will saw it off. No, I'm kidding. Go ahead.
Yeah. You know, I, I know that these, I know when I went through all of this and we got our numbers, but it just kind of bothered me with United Way, because they are helping people out. And I see we have a zero for them. I know that we've already did our numbers, but I, I just, it just kind of bothered me there.
Yeah, and, and the, the young lady didn't get an opportunity to speak before we went down there, so, you know, after hearing what she said and, and all the other nonprofits that they help, they asked for 25, and I would agree with you, Commissioner Berg, I guess I'm putting words in your mouth, but were you going to say the 2,500?
Yes, sir. I'll say 2,500 there, because I, I know they, they have helped out a lot. I know Mr. Burley that works in there with them, and they do a lot.
And I'm sure as, and I didn't even think about that, but with Debbie and Adelia and the, the tornadoes or the thunderstorms that we got in between those two, that they probably incurred some extra expenses. So what's the privilege of the board to do the 2,500 for United Way that they asked for?
I'm good with it.
I'd be good with it.
I'm okay. Got consensus, clerk, 2,500, so make that 142.5 for nonprofits.
Make it go.
No, sir, thank you. So take another 2,500 out of our contingency.
Okay.
What's that at? 1, 2?
3, 3, 1, 8, 8.
3, 3, 1, 8, 8. All right, guys, y'all want to talk about, last year, we left right at 600,000 in contingency going into the year. Y'all want to talk about allocating some money for some roads? Because I sure would like to see us continue our little road.
Yes, sir.
I say little, it ain't little, but our road paving program that we're trying to pick up ourselves.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner White.
If we had 600 in contingency last year, and I'd, I'd be all right with me, and then push the rest of paving, in my opinion.
How, do, do we hit the 600? What, I know we didn't spend all that.
Nina, or Keith, how much, we, we ended budget workshops last year at 599,000 in contingency. What, where are we at year-to-date left over in contingency? I don't have a current green board that I know of.
We're still at the 599.
We never pulled any other?
I don't think we pulled any.
So does that get added to this 1.233, or is that included in it?
Well, it's not with it, it's along with.
It's a separate line.
Yeah, it's part of it.
Is it part of it?
It's included in there, yeah.
I mean, you, I, I don't know. I'm dumb about that, so you're going to have to explain it to me.
Well, every year starts a new contingency. You bring in all your revenues minus all your expenses.
I see what you're saying.
And then you get a new contingency. So it doesn't really roll, it's all part of the big picture all year long.
Understood.
But we never touched it, so I was at, we did well.
Yeah.
I mean, when you do another 600, we just made even five.
She said that five, that five sold it, 599, oh, 5945, 445, that's all in this figure here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
I'd suggest we put, if we had 599 and we never touched it, I would suggest we put 800,000 toward roads.
That's good. I'm good with that. More to marry.
Take 800?
I'd say take 800,000 out of that 1.2 million and put toward roads. I mean, we, we, we had five, 600, 599 in contingency all year, and, and praise the Lord, we didn't have to touch it. So if we put 800,000 toward roads and leave the balance of that 1.2 in contingency, that gives us, well, I'm going to do my math again.
Okay, so 800 towards roads, okay.
Does this 800 go with the million that we still have to determine what we're going to spend it on?
Yes, ma'am. I would think so. I mean, Mr. Scott.
I mean, we're not sending it till we get a list of roads, correct?
Yeah, you're not. Yeah, we don't have a plan for that, where I guess you could say, Mr. Hannick, I see you. Give me one second. I think what we're trying, what I'm trying to do in my brain, I'm speaking for you guys, is build up a revenue source to fix some of these roads that we know FDOT's not going to fund. So a million dollars a mile, I don't, I'm not saying that we're going to be taking on County Road 250 projects, because that, we got to have FDOT to help us with those. But the 184th Street, the little short, you know, cut-through roads that are dirt, like the 153rd project that we couldn't get land on or cooperation with for the right-of-way, roads that our Public Works departments are telling us are just maintenance nightmares that are dirt, which was our chip seal program, which we have gotten away from and gone toward our own paving stuff, because we think we get a better product at pretty much the same price. So I think what, what, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but what, in my mind, we're trying to do is build our own road fund to help reduce those heavy traffic, high-maintenance roads, and turn them from dirt to pavement.
Amen.
Other counties are doing the same thing. I've reached out to other ones, and that's kind of what they're doing, is they've been, you know, as we escrow for buildings, they're escrowing monies for roads. So when they run into a problem, they're not waiting five years for FDOT to help them. They're helping themselves where they can, on the smaller projects. Guys, did I misspeak?
Perfect.
That's it.
Mr. Hannick, welcome, sir.
Morning. One, Hannick, 11883, 93rd Road. Just a quick question, just something I heard yesterday that's been kind of bugging me a little bit. We talked about using herbicides on the roads, but we're still doing with the machine that clears on the sides of the roads, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I don't really understand why you want to spray a herbicide, put a poison on a road, when you can do the same thing with the machine.
It was a dirt roads.
Dirt roads.
On the herbicide on the dirt roads, because the, the guys have, the machines have a hard time keeping up with the paved road right-of-way trimming. We don't do any trimming right now unless it becomes a safety hazard and a special incident where we send those machines to a dirt road. So our, our thought process was, if we could potentially herbicide, and we, I think we asked them to go out to bid on that, to see what those numbers would look like, hire a contractor, that probably would bring a lot more experience to the table than our guys spraying chemical, to eliminate having to send those machines to those. Because what you have is, is mostly smaller stuff that's encroaching out over to the road. So if we could spray those fence roads, if you will, to beat that stuff back, we could do a lot more mileage for less money quicker with a herbicide than having to send a machine down it just to trim little branches.
Mr. Hannick, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner White.
Mr. Hannick, a lot of the roads has got big trees right on the edge of the road, and so that flail mower that's on arm can't, it takes too long to go around, you have to go around those trees. I got a bunch of roads that's like that.
Yeah, I've, I've seen that done on my road. I, I just don't like the.
But it's not going to kill, what they're probably going to put out there is not going to kill the trees. It's just going to get those perennial weeds and whatnot.
That's a girl.
Yeah, like a roundup, that it's only, it only kills what it comes in contact with on the foliage, doesn't kill.
Yeah, they all tell you that, but it still kills everything.
Well, I've done it for 25 years, and I've had it poured all over me.
I mean, that's what the power companies, I mean, the power companies.
That's what they use.
Are spraying their right-of-ways with herbicide, because it's.
And actually, I have signs on my property that we have an organic farm, so they don't spray it. It's, I mow it. I'll, I'll take care of my own stuff.
100%. So I think that if we go that route, based on what a bid or numbers would look like, I think that what we would do is have conversations with the contractor, saying, hey, how do you do this? Like, before you just go down this road spraying chemical, have you contacted the local farmer? Because we don't want any drift drifting over, across the, hit the property line on his crop. Have you contacted all the landowners to say, hey, do they send out public notices to the landowners on that road, saying, hey, we're going to be herbicide and heads up, or whatever, to contact us in the next 30 days, if you will? Or, I, I don't know how they do that. So I got questions about that.
No, I'm just, just, I, I don't like to see herbicides put on the roads and stuff. I'd rather see greenery than I would brownery.
Well, I mean, the problem on these dirt roads that I run into, because I got a ton of dirt roads in my district, is it encroaches on the stop sign. So if you don't, you can't even, I mean, I, I contacted Public Works a month or two ago and sent them out to a road that the stop sign was not even visible anymore. Couldn't see it. If we were, had some type of herbicide, you know, application once a year, once every two years, it would alleviate having to send the road trimming guys from having to pick up and leave a paved road to go way over there just to trim up around a stop sign.
No, I understand.
Then there's liability on us, the county too, is like, hey, you know, if someone got an accident here, it's because your stop sign wasn't visible.
Yeah. No, I understand. Just, just a comment.
Yeah.
Don't.
Pros and cons. The, the equipment's way more expensive and time-consuming. Herbicide, I would think would be less.
Oh, yeah, it's quick.
Less expensive, and can, we can cover twice, three times as much ground, I would think, but I don't know what those numbers look like, so.
Yeah. Other than that, thank you. You guys put a lot of work into what's happening in the last two days, and I appreciate the time that you take.
Thank you.
I, I don't think the public understands what it takes to be a commissioner.
That's right.
And they just don't want to educate themselves, as much as I try to get people to come here and look at things. You see how many are here? Most of them are staff. So, but I do appreciate what you do, and I know it, it's a job.
Well, I speak on behalf of the board. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, I, I humbly respect them, because, like you said, we put in a lot of work over the last, and this didn't just start yesterday with these two days, but the board's been looking at these books for two weeks, you know, going through them and that, writing notes and asking questions. But come tomorrow morning, somebody will be standing there on the keyboard to wear us out for something that we did wrong. You know, so, you know, we, we try our best. We do, we're human too. We put our pants on every morning just like the rest of everybody, and, and, you know, we're not perfect. But I do believe we give it 110%, and we're going to make mistakes. We're going to do, we're going to mess up sometimes, but I think you got five guys up here that truly care about the community and are vested here, that really put in the work and try to, try to make a difference. But nonetheless, we fall short every day in a lot of people's eyes. But hey, we're trying.
Absolutely. They're not as perfect.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hannick.
Mr. Chairman, ask.
To the podium.
Some of the money you have left over, let's use it in the fire department. I've, I've heard the chief only say one thing about radios, but I have a couple of friends that are firefighters, and they're like, we get into a building with a fire, we can't communicate. So if we go down, we can't tell anybody we're down. I really think, take some of that contingency, and let's put it in the fire department, and especially for the life safety of the firefighters.
I think he's working on a radio plan for us, and I think he'll have support when he comes back.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please, sir.
Ken Weaver, Suwannee County citizen, 60 years. In regards to what this gentleman said here, and what you've said about liability, traffic crashes, foliage on the side of the roadway. 10 years ago, I worked a very tragic DUI manslaughter in Suwannee County on Mattress Factory Road. The stop sign was blocked by foliage. The county got named in the civil part of it and was sued. It's important. Part of my, part of my investigation was the roadway, the conditions, what was blocking what, traffic signs, all of that. It's a real in-depth, complicated thing. But the end result was, we got a conviction on the DUI manslaughter, but the county got sued, the landowner got sued, because as we know, the property lines go to the edge of the roadways or come over. Morgan &amp; Morgan got a hold of it. I think we paid on that one. So we've got to do it. We have to mark it. Get this foliage back for our safety of our motor and public, our pedestrians, our bicyclists, our people on horses. If we don't, there's going to be more of it. And I would also like to publicly thank, to follow up, you know, the job that every one of y'all do, all of our county's staff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak, and then we'll move on. We're good. Anything else, Mr. Scott?
Just a couple of comments. Before you leave today, I know the chief was trying to round y'all up yesterday to get ride-along dates with y'all, to get them scheduled. So please, before you leave, have a conversation with him, and it's important for him to share some thoughts he's got. Thank the staff for the, the work. You know, as we go through the budget process, and you touched on it about the keyboard, people get keyboard happy. And, and it's important we listen to the, the citizens and their concerns and, and needs. But I got full faith in our departments, that they're trying to do what's right. You look at items that we purchase or whatever, we buy commercial-grade things, not, not less quality-grade things, because it, it doesn't last. There's decisions we make, looked on longevity, make sure we buy the right product, and work hard at trying to do research buy the right product, and work hard at trying to do research and look at making the right decisions. But thank the staff. I really appreciate the commission and your wisdom to, to, the way you work together, have unified voice. You know, I've been doing this for a long time, working with boards, but it's nice to have boards that's together, work together, challenge each other, but still come out together at the end in a unified voice. But thank y'all, and got any questions for us, we'd be glad to answer any more of the, if you got any more questions.
I'll just go down to like we do at our commission meetings. Commissioner Hale, you got anything you want to add before we adjourn?
Nope, just appreciate everyone being here and being part of the talks.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Before we close out?
And then I'll come back to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll come back to you, Commissioner Hale, I'll come back to you.
I just, I just wanted clarification on the skid steer. I don't want to bring that back up, but.
Ah, man.
I know we talked about the sheriff's office.
Sure. So, I will say this on the skid steer. I bumped into, to the sheriff this morning. I questioned him on some of the, how many he has. According to him, one was donated by forestry to those folks, to the EOC, and he believes the other we purchased, Adelia.
The county purchased.
The county purchased.
Okay.
So I think we already have.
I think it was, too.
But nevertheless, he said it's, either one's available to us at any time, in a moment's notice. So.
So we're not buying a skid steer?
Correct, okay. Just wanted to make, make sure.
We're not buying a skid steer, Mr. Fury's going to contact EOC or the sheriff, and he's going to go borrow their skid steer that's probably sitting in a shelter somewhere and been there for three months.
And I did get consensus on 800,000 for the roads.
800,000 to the road, the road, is it, is it road projects? What, where's that million at? What's the name of that one? What's it called?
The what?
The paving.
What's the?
Road paving project.
Road paving project, yes, that's the name of that.
Plus 800,000.
Plus 800,000 in.
So what's that latest contingency?
433188.
How much?
433188.
That's what I had.
Okay. Sorry, Commissioner, that was, Chairman, that was all I had.
433188, that's what I got.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hale, back to you.
Well, and on that right there, I definitely want the record to reflect that we, we knew that, we, it's not that we overspent, we just put it there, because, you know, every year we wanted it, we had last year in contingency, that's, we did that mindfully. So, I just want to say thank you, appreciate it, appreciate everybody participating here and part of it, and thanking to my board, appreciate all of us working through this together, and I hope this one can be better off because of all these decisions we made, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Commissioner White?
I just want to say hats off to the staff for a lot easier budget to deal with this go-around than we've had in previous years. Really do appreciate that. I appreciate you asking for what you need, and not blowing it up. That's, that's very nice. And hey, I ain't going to spend your money no different than I'd spend my own, so that's where I stand. Thank you.
Commissioner White, Commissioner Perkins?
Just thankful to everybody that came out and helped us out here. Thank you for Nina and Keith and the young lady, and keeping these books and keeping us in line, and, you know, helping us to keep us stay on track of spending money. Thank you for all our departments working together. Thank you, Ms. Brenda, and having that innovative mind to find stuff to bring stuff, help bring us up, and Greg as well, his department, Mandy and all of that work hard to help us to, help us to look good. So we thank you for helping us make us look good.
Commissioner Mobley?
Appreciate the staff, everything y'all do, and everybody for coming, and it's a pleasure working with you guys as well.
Certainly. I'll just echo, echo what they said. Thank y'all to all the staff, and asking for what you need, not what you want, and being respectful, mindful of taxpayers' dollars. I think every commissioner up here, you know, as others have said, we all sign the front of checks too, so I think that we watch over the taxpayers' dollars if it was our own, and I wouldn't spend any of this money if I wouldn't sign a check and spend it that way for mine as well. So that's how I look at it. I know all of you four other guys look at it that way too, so I appreciate what, the work that y'all put into it, working together, and don't always agree, but at the end of the day, we work through it and move on.
Come and go.
Yes, sir.
The Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One thing I'm saying, at our last meeting, while everybody was all talking and, and engaged in what was going on, there was a young man that came in here, stood up over there, and acted very suspicious. No one seen him over there. That's why I'm grateful we do have the sheriff here, but the sheriff wasn't here. But, thank for the Rona back there, he noticed too. He was watching that guy, and the guy came in with two bars of water, and what the guy was going to do, he was standing in that corner over there and just looking crazy. But Rona kept out, he kept looking, over there looking down and looking around, keeping an eye on that guy. But, he didn't, luckily, he didn't do